I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does anyone have a change they want to make? Next item is council comments. First on the list tonight is Councilor Canno.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no comment to see me go.
Councilor Ray.
I'm taking a note real quick like the Merry Christmas and Happy New Year tomorrow.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Amos Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one comment, and that's a request for Mr. Brown, Town Manager. So, he's nodding at me, so he's gonna get it. And also, since the Chief is here, this is also in your purview, Chief. When we discussed the fact that the county had okayed recreational off-road vehicles on the county streets, we knew that there were going to be probably an uptick on our streets. And we agreed that we would engage in education, public education. And I'd like to ask you, Mr. Brown, to bring that public education and move it over into citation of the actual use. There's been, I've seen a number myself, I know that some are riding on the streams, stream beds and stream rides away, so I'd like to really encourage us to begin to take action on the unlawful use of recreational vehicles in our town.
That's the last, Mayor, for the council, sorry, Merry Christmas, hope you guys have a happy new year as well. Reference to that since the last council meeting, that was staffed, put out a zero tolerance on it, so we've, we're done with the education portion of it.
Do you think that was filed, or the request by the county to reduce the speed limit?
Aye.
Councilor Amos Smith.
I noticed that.
One comment, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Alex, for moving into enforcement. And, you know, I'd be really interested to see, but, how many tickets we end up having to give in that particular thing. And since the mayor, since you asked about the status of the, the county commission voted three to two to send a request letter to the District One DOT, and they actually submitted it to the Department Secretary. And they requested certain speed limits drops, signage, and the, according to District One, that is going to be treated, that letter is going to be treated as a request for a speed study on the highways that they named. And they will initiate a speed study. Now, according to the engineer that I talked to, the district engineer, that might not result in any change in speed, it might result in an increase in the speed on it or a decrease. But what they're gonna do is they're gonna use some evidence and research rather than just responding to a request.
Thank you. Councilor Madison?
Thank you, Mary, um, thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I was going into my council comments. Um, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a Happy New Year. We'll see you back then, in the new year, once this meeting's finished, we'll see everybody in the new year.
That's right.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Councilor Ray?
Getting back to Councilor Amos and Smith, and Chief Reynolds' comment about them, side by side, there's been numerous guys that have asked me to pursue it, to see if we could do it. And I told them that, um, first thing that you have to do is that you have to ask the county to give you a map of the road that are eligible, because all roads coming to Silver are not, they're state and they're, and they're not county. So, they also aren't too happy with getting down to speed limit also that you're talking about. They're not too happy about that. But these guys that are asking for that, side by side, I'm not gonna do it because it's gonna create too much, I guess, friction. Um, some people will like it, some people aren't gonna like it, so I don't wanna go there. I think what we're doing is okay, but these guys have to understand that they have to ask the county, not the city, even though all the other roads coming to Silver, they do, but they're not, they're not a city road, they're state and, and they're state road. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Just a quick comment, I don't know if you've noticed the activity that's taking place on the highway with the state trucks that are working on the signs?
Yes.
I had mentioned that to Mr. Brown a while back, because I got a lot of complaints, because some of the signs were totally unreadable, they actually looked white rather than, and so he told me that they were on their way here, and so they finally got here. I stopped and talked to the foreman the other day, and he said, "Well, we're not gonna replace all of them, we'll have to come back." He said, "We actually made up all the signs, but then some of them got set out in the yard for a while, and, and now you can't read them either, so we're gonna have to make up some new signs." So, I guess we have to be patient, and they'll get, but they are, we are on their radar now, so thanks, Mr. Brown, for... Yeah. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the November 28th regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Amos Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the Town and Silver City of November 28th, 2017.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public input, and I see that no one signed up, so we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is reports. Uh, Mr. Brown, do you have anything?
Obviously, I didn't, but then I stopped here. You know, I think I gave you all a copy of the letter that the state auditor sent to the ISC, and, um, basically what they did was commend, uh, basically, they agreed with every one of the comments that we made when we decided not to join the cap entity. Uh, and so I, I basically wanna commend Robert and James, who are the ones that worked on, on that information, and, which have come to be true. And so, um, you know, it's just...
The questions we posed have yet to be answered.
Yeah, the questions that we posed have yet to be answered, and the state auditor basically said, "We don't think they can be answered either." Uh, so, um, so congratulations, thank you to these guys for thought of the...
Thank you, Mrs. Cabron. Yeah, Ms. Mackey, you have some announcements about the election?
I do, thanks, Mayor. Uh, in these next council meetings, I'd like to always talk about the election until March 6th, just to remind people of important dates and things that are happening with our election. So, tonight, I just want to remind people that are interested in being a candidate, that they can pick up candidate packets at my office at City Hall, or they can view them and print them themselves from our town's website, which is www.townsilvercity.org, and just go to the election info page, so they can get all the election info there. As a reminder, the next election will be for elective offices of mayor, of councillor in District Two, councillor in District Four, and municipal judge. The mayor and councillor positions are two-year terms, and municipal judge is a four-year term. The only day for people to file as a candidate is January 9th, that's a Tuesday, it's in my office at City Hall, from 8:00 to 5:00. If people miss that date, or they decide after that date that they want to be a candidate, there is one more option, and that's on January 16th, the very next Tuesday, where they can declare as a write-in candidate. Also, if any qualified electors in our town limits would be interested in being election workers for our upcoming election, they can give me a call at City Hall. Um, my number at the office is 534-6346. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, just following up on Ann's announcement of the election, uh, it probably needs to be said, Pete May, I've been asked a couple of questions about whether the mayor's job or the councillor's jobs, uh, get compensation. The answer is no. There's no compensation, and there are no benefits, or retirement, or health care, or anything else that's good. Just hard work and the gratitude of the public.
Thank you. I think I see our municipal judge, Ms. Reese, welcome. The next item on the agenda is, uh, is our new business, 11A, is the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2017-30, a resolution approving the town of Silver City supplementary 40-year water plan. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, council, the 40-year water plan... What you guys have in front of you is basically the same plan that was presented with a couple of changes. And those changes were recommendations of, for instance, one was to, uh, increase our capacity to, so that we can get all of the water, that water rights that we own actually into the water system. Um, and, and other than that, um, the only things that were added were, we had one member of the community that made some, had some questions, and, and our engineer responded, so those are included with the, the plan itself. So, with that, it's the same document that you were presenting, other than that.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Councilor Madison?
Um, I just want to thank staff for, um, the, some of the clarifications in language. I like the, it's the same, they're saying the same thing, but they've just kind of made it a little bit more clear what it is they're saying. And I think that that really enhances the document, um, to make it more self-explanatory to anyone who might pick it up, so thank, I want to thank them for that.
Yeah, that was, that was something that we discussed, because, um, when you have engineers writing documents, or lawyers writing documents, a lot of times you have to dumb it down so that people like us can understand them, and so we had that discussion.
Any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Amos Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm to approve, approve Resolution Number 2017-30, a resolution approving the town of Silver City supplemental 40-year water plan.
Here, we have a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Madison?
I would second the motion as stated.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Ann.
Councilor Madison?
Aye.
Councilor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Canno?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 11B, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2017-31, a resolution supporting an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonius Infrastructure Fund for improvement, improvements to the wastewater treatment plan. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, council, this is a requirement, uh, as you know, we, we've been very fortunate to receive, uh, Colonius Infrastructure funding for, since the inception of the program, and, um, and this year we want to submit two, two projects. Uh, this first one is, is a wastewater treatment plant project, um, it's some complicated stuff, Robert went over it with me, but it's, uh, basically, once we finish this work, um, we will have almost completely replaced in, the majority of the plant. So, this, um, this project is gonna be between $250,000 and $300,000 right now, we're getting the, and the actual, actual, actual application has to be submitted by mid-January. And, uh, and we are gonna have to request waivers because our College Street project and, um, the construction of the water lines under Highway 15 have not been completed, and so they only give you two years, and if you don't complete them within two years, you can't apply. But we're requesting the waivers because the College Street project has turned from a $900,000 project into a $2 million project by working with the university. And, and we should have that, we're looking to award that contract on, at the end of January. Uh, the 407,000 water line one, uh, has been awarded. Uh, the bid came in over, the original budget for their project was a little over seven and a half million, it came in at like 10 million. Um, I don't know what they did, but they did award the project. Um, so, uh, our portion, our estimated portion was around 407,000, uh, it came, it came in at 399. But until actual construction takes place and they see what's down there, if there's any rock that has to be taken out and stuff that could increase it, and it actually could decrease it if they don't, there's no problems in there. So, um, the staff at the Finance Authority feel comfortable that, that we will get the waiver, because we've actually spent the 407, it's, it's that DOT, and the College Street project, because of all the extra money we've leveraged, and the fact that we actually are gonna be awarding it at the end of January, I think will satisfy their, their concerns.
Any other questions? Councilor Madison?
So, what is the decision gonna make? Is that, do they make them in March? Or...
For the award?
Yeah, for the award.
Yes, in March.
That's, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so, yeah, when they make the award, our College Street project will be three-quarters of the way done.
Okay.
So, and hopefully the highway project will be under construction.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Those pumps, will they be used to help water the golf course?
No. No, it's, it's all part of the, um, processing of the, of the waste, that's, that's the thing to get.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of Resolution Number 2017-31, a resolution supporting an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonius Infrastructure Fund for improvement to the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Canno?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions or comments from the general public? Roll call, please, Ann.
Councilor Connell?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Madison?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is 11C, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2017-32, a resolution supporting an application to the New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonius Infrastructure Fund for street and drainage improvements to Ridge Road Phase One construction. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, council, this is our second application, and as I explained earlier, um, uh, we're gonna request for a waiver on this one as well. Um, right now, we have, this last award that we got was actually the design of the, of Ridge Road, and so we plan on having that completed by September of next year. Um, and that's usually when the, uh, the grants, the Colonius grants actually are received, so we should hopefully be, uh, ready to go directly into construction by that time. And so, uh, because there's a limit to how much you can apply for, any community can, uh, this year can apply for no, no more than 1.1 million dollars, and so depending on what Roberts comes out to, Pierce is gonna be more like about 750,000. So, we're gonna phase Ridge Road, because I believe that project estimated was around 1.5, 1.8 million dollars total, so we're gonna have to phase that project in.
Okay. Any, any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ray?
I move to approve of Resolution Number 2017-32, a resolution supporting an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonius Infrastructure Fund for street and drainage improvements to Ridge Road Phase One construction.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Canno?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Please.
Any questions or comments from the general public? Roll call, please, Ann.
Councilor Canno?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Madison?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is 11D, the approval slash disapproval of Notice of Intent Ordinance Number 1265, an ordinance amending Chapter 28, Sections 28-22, Office Created, and 28-27B, Compensation of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Silver City. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Cabron's gonna...
Mr. Cabron? Yes. Mayor, council?
Uh, this ordinance was necessary in order to clear up some ambiguity and to consolidate various provisions in the ordinance that permits the appointment of a municipal judge, establishes the court, and appoints a judge. We have changed nothing. The salary has not been decreased or increased. There was some ambiguity about whether an elected official earns, uh, personal leave and sick leave. They do not. And we needed to correct that, we have corrected it, and that's what this ordinance does. Makes it clear what your compensation is. Uh, there's one change in it, and that's the very last paragraph, uh, where it says that the, uh, "The municipal judge shall in exchange for such compensation and benefits, be obligated to fulfill the duties mentioned in Section 2830," that's the list of the duties of the judge, "and elsewhere in the chapter, "and be available to the court during all hours the court is open for the conduct of business at the minimum of 32 hours." It, right now, it says 30 hours. In order to pay, the, the municipal judge will be getting other benefits, uh, insurance, medical, uh, and in order for that to be paid, that she has to be, or the judge has to be considered to have worked 32 hours or more. So, we're changing it from 30 to 32, so that we don't run into problems with the medical and the other benefits that are part of the compensation package. And we're doing it now, because with the declaration of the candidacy coming up in January, it's, we felt it was important that whoever's running for that office know exactly what they are, are getting for that position.
Councilor Canno?
I have a question. I'll start with what you just said. Um, I'm concerned about the timing too, because if this notice of intent passes and then we vote on it, we won't vote on it until after filing day, so if somebody who's considering running, I mean, they're, they're working on with what we have now, and then it's gonna change after filing day.
There is no change, this is more ministerial. Elected officials do not earn personal leave, they do not earn sick leave. It was unclear to some whether that was the case or not. We're just making it clear, the compensation doesn't change, it does not, the, the law says that before the term commences, the term commences March 6th, if someone wants to drop out because, well, there's, there'd be no reason, because there is no substantive change in the law. The salary is fixed, the previous judges have gotten medical and insurance, so that's not changing. The issue had to do with whether a salaried elected official collects sick leave and personal leave, and they do not.
It's specifically vacation, because vacation pay is paid out as it's accrued, uh, and that employee, a current employee will get paid out their vacation leave. So, a judge does not, is not required to take any form of leave if they're not gonna be there. But, the way that the current law reads, it implies that they do still get vacation accrue. So, that would be an additional compensation above the $36,000 plus the, the, uh, the health insurance plan and, and retirement.
And just for the sake of clarification, there's the, the line in here that says... Hold on. Um, just a second. City and school judges will not be considered an employee of the town for any other purpose, so could you just give me an example of what any other purpose means?
Grievance procedures, union, uh, those are two that come to the top of my mind. Uh, they are answerable to the people who elected them, rather than to the town manager or the mayor.
Yeah, that's the main thing, is that she is not answerable to me, to the public.
And then just the other question I had was, um, other municipalities that are like the size of ours, are they standard?
Yes, and actually, we look at compensation in the Mariner, and it's very comfortable.
I had asked Mr. Brown to survey other communities in the state about our size in terms of what their salary was.
And a lot of us do, do things a lot, some do, do it differently. For instance, Denny pays them on an hourly, hourly rate, so if they're there 20 hours, they only get paid for 20 hours. And, uh, this case, it's a salaried position, so they get 36,000 plus benefits, as long as the court is open 32 hours a week.
And, Councilor Madison?
So, um, I know that the original ordinance, um, it stated that they were full-time, and I appreciate the fact that, uh, it's defined what full-time is, which is going to be the 32 hours, because that's how full-time is defined, correct?
That was the area of some ambiguity, because implying that there, that the judge was a full-time employee also implied that the judge was subject to the management of the town manager, which the judge is not.
Correct.
And, or to the mayor, which the judge is not. The judge is answerable to the electorate, it's a separate branch of government. So, saying, treating the judge as an employee would be a diminution of the judge's inherent powers.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, do I hear a motion? Councilor Madison?
Mr. Mayor? I move to approve of Notice of Intent Ordinance Number 1265, an ordinance amending Chapter 28, Sections 28-22, Office Created, and 28-27B, Compensation of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Silver City, with the amendment in, um, Section 28-7B, uh, the last paragraph, the last line, changing the minimum number of 30 hours a week to, at the minimum, the minimum number of 32 hours per week. Yes, yeah.
Excuse me, but, um, Councilor Madison, would you repeat the section number that you cited?
Sure. It's Section 28, I'm sorry, Section 28-27, um, uh, B, okay? B, okay. And then, it's the last paragraph, and it's the last line, the last phrase of the line, changing the number from 30 to 32 hours per week.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Councillor Amos Smith?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I second that motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any comments or questions from the general public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Mackey?
No.
It's N.O.I., so it's no roll call. I didn't call for a roll call.
I know.
Oh, what do I say? Okay.
You want to do it again? Mayor, my brain was on resolution. Sorry.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item is 11E, the approval/disapproval of the destruction of records from the following departments, Community Development, Executive, Finance, Library, Municipal Court, Police, Recreation Center, and Utilities. The quantity, 121 boxes. Ms. Mackey?
Yes, Mayor and councillors. We typically do an annual destruction of our municipal records, and that's what I'm asking for tonight. We have a collection of 121 boxes from those various departments. I'm asking for your approval. If you approve, then I will contract with a bonded shredding vendor that will come and collect those boxes and shred them with witnesses.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Mackey? Councillor Madison?
My apologies, Ms. Mackey, but I just read a sentence on the form where it says, "They're eligible for destruction according to the most current state of New Mexico Records Retention and Disposition Schedule for municipalities." Did we adopt the state one, or are we under still the original one that the Town of Silver City adopted?
The town adopted the repeal state schedules, because they had made new schedules that we kept using. We're still using the ones that were repealed, as many other municipalities have decided to do. So, we are using the same ones we've always used.
So, it's not the most current? That's what I'm stating, is that the record form says the most current state of New Mexico.
So, it should just be the...
It should just say that the Town of Silver City's Records Retention and Disposal Schedule.
And what form are you looking at?
I'm looking at the first, I'm looking at page four or five. Actually, all of them say that, so the first page actually says it correctly, the Town's Records Retention and Disposal Schedule. After that, it says the most current state of New Mexico Records Retention, from page two onwards.
She just needs to fix that.
With the section of the first page.
So, the forms are with the departments, they weren't updated. They're just blank forms. They fill in every year. Some forms were never updated.
So, the person moving can ask that that just be updated by a correction by hand? Is that sufficient?
Sure. We can do that. We can, this collection of destruction requests is a permanent record.
Okay.
So, if you would like me to make notations, I mean, I could make a notation on the cover memo, or if you want me to make a notation of each one, you just tell me what to do and I'll do it.
I think the cover memo is fine, but I'm not the only council member here, so...
Yield to the attorney.
Yield to the attorney, because it does state correctly in the cover memo...
What we just do is put an asterisk next to each one of the forms, and on the cover memo, explain the asterisk, and that's it.
Thank you. Because the cover memo is correct. It says the Town's Records Retention and Disposal Schedule. I'm just worried about the permanent records, where all the ones after the first one say something else. So, thank you to Mr. Scavron.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor Connaught, I think he wanted to motion this one?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of the destruction of records from the following departments, Community Development, Executive, Finance, Library, Municipal Court, Police, Recreation Center, and Utilities. Quantity, 121 boxes, with an asterisk on the cover memo denoting the change on the rest of the pages.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Councillor Amos Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
Motion second. Any questions or comments from the general public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Agenda item 11F is the Appointment to Planning and Zoning Commission. The town received a reapplication from Carmen Stevens to continue her service on the Planning and Zoning Commission. She has served since September 10th, September 10, 2013. The chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the town's Community Development Director highly recommended Mrs. Stevens' reappointment. If there are no objections, I would like to go ahead and appoint her to that commission. I hereby appoint Ms. Carmen Stevens to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Before we adjourn, I forgot to mention, under Mayor's comments, that I was present at the exit interview for the town's audit, and the head audit from Stone McGee, is that right, Mr. Brown? He said to make sure that I passed on to the council that this was a great experience for him, that he always enjoys working with the Town of Silver City, because in spite of the City Hall being inundated with lots of people lining up at different department doors to get information and look through records, that everybody in City Hall was really accommodating, and he wanted to recognize that. He wanted to recognize the, how easy it is to work with Mr. Brown and how accommodating he is. So, I wanted to make sure and mention that before we... This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion? Councillor Amos Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Second.
Oh, a second, yeah, a second. Councillor Madison, go first.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. I'm not anxious to get out of here. All in favor, say aye.